For the RDC to put in and assist with the re, I believe it is the reconstruction of Hornet Avenue. Hornet Avenue does touch on part of a redevelopment or allocation area, and so, under our redevelopment laws, we are allowed to assist in that nature. But it was brought before us with a specific line item, and the RDC members, when given a choice between one with this line item and one without, they decided, since we have this information, we can make a specific line item for a specific project in this, in that particular area of the city. The other one for project slash professional fees, that's our professional fee line item, so we can pay invoices that we receive from our attorneys, Bob Ron and Brian Stats over at Lewis and Capps, as well as Jeff Peters, our fiscal consultant, for an amount of $839,609. If you look on the back, this is a, the standard, look back at what our budgets have been in the past, what our current budget is, and what we're projecting for 2023. So, in putting together our budget, because we don't know what our end year number will be, but looking at making sure we wanted to reserve some funding, again, I've said this in the past, I said this last year in our budget, we are not a board that looks to spend every amount of revenue that we have. Find that to be probably not the wisest thing to do, because we don't know what will happen in the next year with property taxes, business that comes before the RDC, what have you. But we did at least try to protect it, or project an ending balance of $36,000, and then using that for 2023, we, because it's the only number that we know that we have, we essentially plugged in the amount of revenue that were received from property taxes during this year, meaning the ones that were received in the payments that were in January, from Jim Kaufman's report back in January of what went into our fund, as well as the other payment that came in July. And so, that's how we get to the $83609. To essentially try and plug in the revenue where we can, we created, we looked at these line items, but again, I will stretch, much like last year, if I'm on the RDC next year and serve as its president, at least speaking for myself, we have no anticipation of actually spending down all this money, so we end 2023 with $0. Again, it's just not a thing that we do. Not to mention that, assuming that property values to continue to go up as they have been, we may actually pull in more revenue in property taxes than we are anticipating. Fortunately, I am not Karnak, I cannot predict that number, and so, we just go with the numbers that we know of. But that is how we arrived at that number, and why you see an end balance of $0. It's just that, we like to make sure we're plugging in, you know, something into somewhere in case there is a project, we don't know how in our various redevelopment or in allocation areas, where a opportunity will present itself, but that is what we have. What you won't see, because we've actually finally all paid them off, is that our bonds are all paid off. So those line items disappear, we do not have to move some of our revenue into those specific line items to pay off those bonds, they have been paid off, and we are very, very happy about that. But so that's where we are at the budget, I'll be happy to take any questions to talk about some specifics that you may have, but I do hope that this meets with your approval, so we can have a, continue to have a good year, like we have in the past years of helping, of helping to redevelop the city and bring its economy, and what benefits our residents here, increase that more and more.
Jeff, do you want to comment on the numbers?
No, you know, I think we've been through those. But would field any questions? But yes, we've got more capital.
Counsel have questions for the president?
No, thank you for your hard work.
I do want to tell the public that this is a budget that has to be approved by the council. So, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the 2023 budget for the Redevelopment Commission.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The budget passes. Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Matt.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, sorry, please, all right, yes.
Next special presentation also concerns the Redevelopment Commission. It's Resolution Number Nine, 2022, and it concerns the establishing a TIF district at 201 Bethel. The property council at 201 Bethel used to be, a long time ago, was a lumberyard. It was home to newcomer lumber, and they went out of business, and it's went into, I don't want to say disrepair, I'm just kind of being gentle, in my opinion, it was almost a blighted area. Needed cleanup very badly. K&amp;W Equipment, who you'll hear from here in a minute, has purchased the property, and they have done a major cleanup environmentally, and it looks so much better than it has in years. There's more work to do, and they're willing to do it, which includes the remodel of the main building and the construction of a warehouse. And they are, they are a company, reputable company, that is moving their operation to the city of Beach Grove. And in that will be at least 22 full-time jobs, and, which will boost our economy. So, they're here tonight to establish a TIF district, to assist them with the upgrade to this property, and I want to turn it over to not only the attorneys for the RDC and the president, but also K&amp;W Equipment. The owners are here this evening, and I think they would like to say a couple words to the council. Come on up, introduce yourself, and...
Hi, my name is Bob Peterson, Principal Officer at K&amp;W Equipment. You know, one of the things that I'm most proud of with the, with the company we started, we're, we just started our sixth year, and we have some really great employees. Our, our, with benefits, our pay per employee is in excess of $80,000. So, we have 23 employees total, full-time employees total, so, you know, we're really proud of that, we take care of our people, you know, we want to benefit the community that we're in, you know, we're excited about the opportunity with Beach Grove, we're currently renting property in about four places, but, but our main operation is Indianapolis, in the Brookville Business Park at Brookville and Shadland Avenue. So, we're moving from that area and want to come to Beach Grove and, and grow our business here. So, appreciate you guys listening and helping us out. Does anybody have any questions?
I would encourage any of the other councils, persons, to go and walk around that area. I've taken my walks through that, over, around that, your business, and...
Right.
Absolutely, it's cleaned up, it looks good, it's, it really, it really presents well for the city.
Yeah, but we've got a lot more work to do, we're totally remodeling the building, we've had some, in the 8,500 square foot office building, we've had some work done to the exterior, some work started on the interior, a lot of the stuff is just infrastructure, we had a new water line put in last week, just that kind of stuff, and then we're going to build another building behind that building to house equipment. So, we're a distribution, not manufacturing, I mean, we don't make anything, we, we sell equipment, new equipment to the petroleum industry, so, you know, some of our customers that, they, you know, it's like Ricker Oil and Circle K, Speedway, folks like that, so, you know, we're glad to be here and glad to be in this area.
I'll continue to do my walks over there.
Okay, hey.
So you won't actually have any petroleum products or anything?
No, I mean, everything that we sell is new, I mean, hasn't had, I mean, we're in the fluid handling business, but, I mean, we don't really do anything with the, with the, with the product or anything like that. We do have, we do sell small tanks, but all the tanks that we sell are empty, and then we sell that to, to people who set those tanks out and fill them, but that, but doesn't happen at our place or anything like that.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm excited that you guys are to this point, I know you guys called my office back in January, I believe you started this process about looking into moving into Beach Grove, so, I'm glad 10, 12 months here, here we are, and things are looking good, and I'm glad that you guys made that call back in January, because I think it's a good thing for the city, good for your company, and glad that the RDC stepped up and looking to help that process as well, so...
Thank you.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing.
Welcome.
Thanks.
I'd like to ask our financial consultant to come up and run through what this actually means financially to the RDC, and Jeff, if you could come up?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to be here and help. In looking at this, you know, this is your standard case of redevelopment, and why it is that you have an RDC, to take an area like this that is in disrepair, and be able to incent them to come in, spend their money, and not only are they redeveloping the buildings that are there, but they're going to give you a new building as well, they're going to make a fairly substantial investment in personal property that the RDC will not capture, but will actually go to the tax base of the city and all the underlying taxing entities, and add jobs. From a purely finance and revenue capture, if we look at the amount that they're going to invest in the redevelopment of the real property in the new building, it should be about $900,000. As you know, commercial property is limited to 3%, so potentially, that's about $27,000 a year that will come back to the Redevelopment Commission. So if you were to incent them at $100,000 within four years, all of your money will have come back, and this will be in existence for at least 25 years, assuming that you don't achieve all of your redevelopment goals and release the assessed value of the TIF districts back to the tax base. You know, you're going to have hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional revenue that you will be able to use to achieve more of those redevelopment goals. And one of the things that we always look at in redevelopment of areas like that is the Rule of Nine, those nine properties that potentially surround that area, their values will go up, they'll be more inclined to spend their own money to redevelop it and improve it, and, you know, this is a perfect example of how redevelopment should work. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
In order to do, counsel, in order for you to do this, you have to pass a resolution, which the RDC has already passed, and Brian, did you want to comment on it?
Only to say that spoke with Mr. Kaufman earlier, there are a couple typos in the resolution, which I apologize for, but basically, before the council tonight, is to approve a declaratory resolution that the RDC made last month, part of the process for establishing a TIF district pursuant to Indiana law.
So, counsel, Resolution Number Nine allows you to do that, and at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record in its entirety.
Resolution Number Nine, 2022, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, approving Redevelopment Commission Resolution Number Six, 2022, as consistent with the plan of development for the city. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14, the Act, the City of Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission adopted in December 2008, Resolution Number One, 2008, creating, as amended, the current version of the Beach Grove Integrated Redevelopment Area, which Resolution Number One, 2008, was found by the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, to be consistent with the commission's integrated redevelopment plan and/or their comprehensive development plan for the City of Beach Grove by Common Council Resolution Number Three, 2008. And whereas the commission adopted on September 15, 2022, declaratory Resolution Number Six, 2022, attached herein as Exhibit A, amending Resolution Number One, 2008, in the plan by creating the Bethel Avenue Allocation Area. And whereas as a development, redevelopment commission of an excluded city as described in Section 1B of the Act, the commission was not required to submit the declaratory resolution and supporting data to the planned commission as described, Section 16 of the Act. And whereas Section 16, Part D of the Act requires the Common Council to approve the declaratory resolution and plan as amended, as consistent with the plan of development for the City of Beach Grove, and therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove in Deans Falls. One, the Common Council finds that the declaratory resolution and plan as amended conforms to the plan of development for the City of Beach Grove. Two, the action of the commission on September 15, 2022, as described in the declaratory resolution, is in all respects approved, ratified, and confirmed by the Common Council. Three, this resolution shall be effective from and after its passage and approval by the Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. Resolution Number Nine, 2022.
Comments from council members?
The date, was that one of the...
Correct. Yeah. So as I read it, was the way that it should appear.
Okay, thanks.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number Nine, 2022.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or correction of the minutes. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Under unfinished business, we have two items. The first item is the 2023 Salary Ordinance, General Ordinance Number 11, 2022, is up for approval on second reading only. And counsel, at the last meeting, the clerk read the ordinance into the record in its entirety. Tonight, you can, if you so choose, read it into the record by title only on both second and third reading. So, it is up for approval on second reading, I'll entertain a motion to read by title only.
I'll make motion.
Well, I just have a couple questions, real quick, if we get there. The salary ordinance, just so I'm on the same page, that is not, is not increased for elected officials, is that correct?
No increase for elected officials.
Okay, so no increase for elected officials. What is the percentage of increase for the employees?
The police is approximately 12%, DPW is approximately 8%, and all other workers in the city is between 3% and 5%.
Okay, is, does that also an increase for the part-time employees also?
Yes.
Okay, so, salary increase for pretty much everybody across the board except elected officials?
Yes.
Okay, good deal.
And, President, also, any, any appointed position, non-elected, appointed by the mayor, like Board of Works member, no raise.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to read title only.
Second. We'll start on my left, Kevin.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only.
City of Beach Grove, Indiana, 26 page, 2023 Salary Ordinance. General Ordinance Number 11, 2022, is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, in the year 2023, be it ordained by the Common Council for the City of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thank you. This time, General Ordinance 11, 2022, is up for approval on second reading only, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 11, 2022, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening, I'll ask for a motion at this time to read by title only.
I'll make motion, read by title only.
Second.
We'll begin here on my left, Kevin.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the 2023 Salary Ordinance, which is General Ordinance Number 11, 2022, into the record on third and final reading.
City of Beach Grove, Indiana, 2023 Salary Ordinance. General Ordinance Number 11, 2022, is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, in the year 2023, be it ordained by the Common Council for the City of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thank you. This time, General Ordinance Number 11, 2022, is up for approval on third and final reading. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Mayor, if I could make a statement real quick?
Yes, sir.
I will say that, you know, you have fought hard, and so has this council, to make Beach Grove recognized as one of the best-paid police departments in the city. I will say, with this effective pay raise that we just did, they are going to be higher-paid third-year police officers than IMPD.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know where they were at. At the Board of Works meeting, somebody asked that, and I knew we were close, but I didn't know where.
Approximately $1,400 more.
Well, I'll tell you what, Bobby, you're one, you're a police officer as well.
Thank you.
You all should be paid a lot more than what you're making, as far as I'm concerned, for what all of you have to put up with. I did not put the General Ordinance 12 into your packet, and I didn't know if you would bring it with you from the last meeting, so I supplied you with another copy of General Ordinance Number 12, which we'll hear tonight on second and third reading, which is the actual budget for the city. So, General Ordinance Number 12 is up for approval on second reading only, and at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Ordinance Number 12, be it ordained by the City, Beach Grove City Council, that for the expenses Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31, 2023, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the saying. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City, property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Beach Grove City Council. Name of adopting entity, fiscal body, Beach Grove City Council. Type of adopting entity, fiscal body, Beach Grove City Council. Date of adoption, October 17, 2022. Funds, fund code 0061, fund name, Randi Day, adopted budget 0, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 0101, general fund, adopted budget $11,65,879, adopted tax levy $8,25,908, adopted tax rate 1.6052%. Fund 0180, fund debt service, adopted budget $121,380, adopted tax levy $55,000, adopted tax rate 0.0110%. Fund 0283, lease rental payment, adopted budget $395,000, adopted tax levy $425,000, adopted tax rate 0.0850%. Fund 0341, fire pension, adopted budget $40,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund code 0342, police pension, adopted budget $533,000, adopted tax levy $84,000, adopted tax rate 0.0168%. Fund 0706, local road and street, adopted budget $556,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 0708, motor vehicle highway, adopted budget $1,418,500, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 1151, continuing education, adopted budget $40,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 1310, park non-reverting capital, adopted budget $10,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Total adopted budget $14,179,759, adopted tax levy $8,589,908, adopted tax rate 1.7180%. Home rule funds, not reviewed by the DLGF, fund code 9500, fund name, Public Safety Lowet, 1170, adopted budget $2146,158. Fund 9507, fund name, Home Rule Fund Number Eight, adopted budget $287,845. Total adopted budget for home rule funds, $2433,000, sorry, $2433,343. Sorry, messed it up.
Thank you, clerk. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 12, 2022, on second reading only.
I'll make said motion to approve ordinance, I apologize, for a second reading.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Before we introduce it on third and final reading, I would ask our financial consultant to come back up and speak with you folks and the public about the funding of this budget and how we came to this, and how we can afford to do this. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. As you're all aware, we maintain a fiscal plan for the city, along with the input of the fiscal officer and the mayor. And what this fiscal plan does is provide a framework for both operation, operational and capital needs that the city has, and to look at how specifically you're going and capital needs that the city has, and to look at how specifically you're going to fund those things, and to make sure that decisions that you make today have good forethought, and you're not committing yourselves to things that you can't commit to or can't fund in the future. The fiscal plan looks out three years into the future, so as we've sat down with the clerk treasurer, et cetera, and worked through the revenue side of the budget, across that three-year period, revenue and expenditure match up really nicely. I know you've given big raises. We've looked at the impact of those as we go forward, and again, revenues and expenditures pretty much match across that three-year period. The other thing that makes me comfortable with what it is that you've done and the sustainability of it is there, what I would say are a few soft points in your budget, in that over the last couple of years, you have pulled back from the amount of return on investment you pay from the Sewage Works Fund to the general fund, to the amount of about $200,000 a year. So, you have full authority to go claim that extra $200,000 in future years, if you would need that to bridge an operating gap. You also fund about $600,000 a year in road projects through your income tax monies that you can, as the fiscal body, freely allocate to capital or operating, to the general fund, or what you've done in this budget, as in past budgets, is allocate some of it to local road and street, some of it to motor vehicle highway, in order to undertake these road projects. So, there's another $600,000 a year that if you had an operational gap, if we go into a hard time where revenues start to shorten, you can back off of some of those capital projects or fund them in a different way, and have that money for operational revenue. The other significant part about your budget for this year is assessed values in Beech Grove are up over 15% for pay 23, so you're anticipated to actually have a reduction in your property tax rate next year as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That's good news.
Jeff, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two key points, counsel. You have on the verge of passing a budget that reduces taxes, builds a new PlayStation, gives well-deserved raises to all city employees, both part-time and full-time, and you're going to pass a budget that increases public safety by over $340,000. So, my hat's off to you. Well done. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to read the General Ordinance 12, 2022, into the record on third and final reading. Jim?
Ordinance 12, being ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that the expenses of Beech Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2023, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beech Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Beech Grove City Council. Name of adopting entity, fiscal body, Beech Grove City Council. Type of adopting entity, fiscal body, Beech Grove City Council. Date of adoption, October 17th, 2022. Funds, fund code 0061, fund name Rainy Day, adopted budget $0, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 0101, general, adopted budget $11,65,879, adopted tax levy $8,25,908, adopted tax rate 1.6052%. Fund 0180, debt service, adopted budget $121,380, adopted tax levy $55,000, adopted tax rate 0.0110%. Fund 0283, lease rental payment, adopted budget $395,000, adopted tax levy $425,000, adopted tax rate 0.0850%. Fund 0341, fire pension, adopted budget $40,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 0342, lease pension, adopted budget $533,000, adopted tax levy $84,000, adopted tax rate 0.0168%. Fund 0706, local road and street, adopted budget $556,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 0708, motor vehicle highway, adopted budget $1,418,500, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 1151, continuing education, adopted budget $40,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Fund 1310, park non-reverting capital, adopted budget $10,000, adopted tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0.0%. Total adopted budget $14,179,759, adopted tax levy $8,589,908, adopted tax rate 1.7180%. Home rule funds not reviewed by the DLGF, fund 9500, fund name Public Safety Lowet 1170, adopted budget $2,146,158. Fund 9507, fund name Home Rule Number, Home Rule Fund Number 8, adopted budget $287,845. Total Home Rule Funds not reviewed by the DLGF, adopted budget $2,434,003.
Thank you, Jim. General Ordinance Number 12, 2022, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion to approve General Ordinance Number 12, 2022, on third and final reading.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes unfinished business, counsel. We did not have anybody sign up to speak to you this evening, so we skipped it. So, we go to Agenda Item 9, New Business. General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, is up for approval on first reading, and I think before we do this, I think I'll defer to our city attorney to bring us up to date on what the Building Corporation's done and what we should do this evening. Craig?
Yeah, so the Building Corporation met tonight at 6:30 and approved purchase agreements and the other necessary documents to move forward, bonds. And Jeff can correct me, but I think tomorrow, they're going to go out into the open market and purchase the bonds, and then two weeks later, they'll do a closing. So, essentially what this ordinance does is it gets the council's approval for us to move forward with that process.
I know that, I stand corrected, I only wanted to read this on first reading tonight and bring it back in November, but I can't do that, right?
Yeah, we gotta get, we gotta do it, it's gonna be one of those, they need the approval tonight for us to proceed tomorrow.
Okay.
But it's gotta be unanimous all four, all three members.
What I'll do is, we'll introduce it on first reading, and then if it passes, then I'll ask the council to waive the rules and to hear it on all two other readings this evening. Jeff, did you want to comment on the bond process or anything?
I can, if there's any questions, or I can just give you a quick overview.
Quick overview. Quick overview.
Okay.
You know, we talked about the process in depth before. We have gone through all the steps of, as Craig said, getting ready to go to the open market. We had a call today with our underwriters specifying what pricing we're going to go at to the market with in the morning. So, as of noon tomorrow, we should have a scale as to what that's going to cost. You're going to get the current market rate. You know, those of you that watch the market, you've seen how it has undulated for the last several months, and always, of course, in an upward motion. So, still historically, you will get, I think, a good rate based on, if we look back to normal times of what I would say is pre-Great Recession, you should be fine in that regard. Again, it fits within your budget, fits within the parameters we originally talked about, and, you know, as the mayor said earlier, should be looking at a tax rate decrease because of the increase in your assessed value. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any over-big-picture questions regarding the funding.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, is up for approval on first reading only. This time I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record in its entirety. Jim, sir.
Ordinance Number 14, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Beech Grove approving matters relating to the financing of the project and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement. Whereas the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, has determined to acquire a police station, whereas the city has entered into a lease agreement dated August 1st, 2022, with the Beech Grove Building Corporation. Whereas the corporation is considering a resolution approving the instruments and bond of its ad valorem property tax lease rental bonds of 2022, an inaccurate principal amount not to exceed $9,140,000 to finance the project, and a copy of the resolution is incorporated herein by reference. Whereas the city and the corporation have obtained all necessary approvals required by law for the instruments of the bonds and the execution of the herein after defined lease, and whereas a substantially final form of continuing disclosure undertaking certificate was presented to the council for approval, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, that Section 1, the corporation will use bond proceeds to acquire the project. Section 2, the city hereby approves the sale of the bonds in accordance with the terms of the resolution of the corporation to be considered for adoption October 3rd, 2022, approving the sale of the bonds. The city agrees to cooperate with the corporation and to assist it in fulfilling the requirements of all agencies of the federal, state, and city governments. Section 3, upon the redemption of retirement of the bonds issued by the corporation, the city will accept from the corporation title to the project, free and clear of any and all liens and encumbrances thereof. Section 4, the city thereby approves a form of continuing disclosure undertaking certificate attached hereto and incorporated herein, and authorizes the mayor and the clerk treasurer to execute such certificate. Section 5, the city hereby ratifies the actions of the corporation deeming the preliminary official statement relating to the bonds as nearly final, and hereby ratifies and approves the execution of the preliminary official statement by the mayor and the clerk treasurer. Section 6, the city reasonably expects that tax-exempt obligations issued by or on behalf of the township, including the bonds, will not exceed $10 million in calendar year 2022. The bonds are hereby designated as qualified tax-exempt obligations for purposes of Section 265, Section B, Section 3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended. Section 7, the mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to endorse their approval on the final official statement on behalf of the city with such changes as they shall approve, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by their signature on the final official statement. Section 8, mayor and the clerk treasurer are hereby authorized on behalf of the city to approve and execute any and all certificates and documents necessary in connection with the instruments of the bonds of the corporation, as adopted by the Common Council of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, the 17th day of October, 2022.
Thank you, Jim. The floor is open for any questions or comments. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Counsel, in order to proceed on second and third reading this evening, it takes unanimous consent from all of you. So, I would recommend that we move to hear this on second and third reading. So, I'll ask a motion to waive the rules, to hear it on second and third reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
And we have to have unanimous vote, starting on my left.
Aye.
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 We will proceed. General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, is up for approval on second reading only. This time I'll ask a motion to read by title only.
Make a motion, read by title only?
I'll second.
We'll begin on my left.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only for second reading.
Ordinance Number 14, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Beech Grove approving matters relating to the financing of the project, ratifying and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, is up for approval on second reading only. At this time I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll entertain a motion to read by title only.
On motion.
Second.
We'll begin on my left.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, into the record on third reading by title only.
Ordinance Number 14, 2022, an ordinance of the city of Beech Grove approving matters relating to the financing of the project and ratifying and approving distribution of a preliminary official statement.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 14, 2022, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. That concludes new business. We have no other business to address this evening, and I really appreciate your patience and the good work that the council did, not only tonight, but throughout the year. We'll close with council comments, beginning We'll close with council comments, beginning on my right. Kara?
Yeah, so the Hornet Park Community Center, I don't know if you guys are familiar or not, but they have been having these pop-up pantries on Friday nights from three-thirty to six. So I think it's a great thing for the community. They also are always looking for volunteers for that event, so that's all I've got.
It's great to be part of another balanced budget here for the city. It looks like, again, left in, you know, financial green. You know, we're finally stable, everything's looking good. K and W, welcome to the city, and it's nice that we could, you know, give a little increase again to the police that, like somebody already said, didn't get paid enough money in my eyes either, so.
Thank you. I would just like to ask the council to take under consideration coming in, in the future, funding for, funding, using funding from the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one to assist with security lighting and upgrade, security upgrades, which would include lighting and cameras to our parks, EMS, and other areas of need in the city. I know that we're working on some upgrades in these areas and would hopefully include the EMS station for cameras and security lighting, so that might be a good thing that we could use that ARPA funds to help assist coming, you know, coming months. Something else good to work on.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody who came today. Glad we could help out and assist some of our new businesses coming in Beech Grove. Glad you chose Beech Grove to move here. That was one of my goals and why I ran for office, is to make Beech Grove a destination for people to come, not a destination to drive through. So I'm glad you guys have chose Beech Grove to set up shop. I'm glad we're able to take care of all of our city employees. They are the backbone of the city. We're just people that sit up here once a month, sometimes twice a month, and just make decisions, but our employees, especially DPW, police, and EMS, are the backbone of the city, and they're the ones that represent our city very well, and I'm glad we're able to take care of them. And if I can, Mayor, there was a tweet that just came out by FOP president, if I can read that. He said, "Breaking news, Beech Grove City Council just passed a twelve percent raise to their police officers. Major move makes BGPD pay higher than Indy and sets them up to compete for current and potential IMPD officers. Congratulations to our fellow FOP sisters and brothers in Beech Grove."
Wow.
So it's, our words are already getting out, and it's very positive for the city, and Chief, get ready for some applicants probably.
Good stuff.
Yep, thank you.
So we're going to help get you a raise now. Well, I don't know, we'll see. Congratulations to K and W, I hope it goes well for you over there. I can remember going into Newcomer many, many years ago. It was a nice place at one time.
Yeah.
Did a lot for the city at one time. Other than that, I appreciate the work, like I told you, Mayor and clerk treasurer and everyone did on the budget. I thought it was a good budget. That's all I got.
Yeah, I also want to welcome K and W, thank you everyone who came tonight. Park, you guys done a good job on the budget. You know, it's a lot of hard work, you know, months and months of preparation, so.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see what Bobby said, that's, that's important. So, that, that's all I got.
All right. And counsel, I just want to, again, thank you for the good work that you've done, not just tonight, but throughout this entire year. So the city's better off because of the decisions that all of you have made. So with that, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.